Thank you for joining us this evening. The Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, June 25, 2019. Before I read the agenda, it is with deep regret that I must announce the passing of Bonnie Fleck, our Town Collector Treasurer. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family at this time of sorrow and loss for them. We've notified the state and our auditors of the vacancy in this very key position at end of year, which is a key time of year as well, and we will work with all due diligence to fill this position expeditiously. So, not the happiest of news. So, for our agenda tonight, at 7:00 we have the Community Input, 7:15 Joint Selectmen Planning Board meeting to appoint an Associate Planning Board member. At 7:30, an update regarding the Community Center feasibility study. Abacus Architects and the Chanah Grant Committee will be here. At 8:15, we are to approve the fiscal '20 Fire Department payroll changes. 8:30, we have the 2019 Annual Board Committee Appointments, Complete Streets Committee Charge that we'll discuss. At 8:45, we have the Selectmen Policy and Guideline Review, and we'll be asking for updates from Board members on those. 9:00 PM, we'll discuss Town Council Memo About the Organization in Form of Government. At 9:20, we have Cemetery Deeds. At 9:25, Town Administrator Support. 9:35, our liaison reports. Not much going on, so I doubt that we'll have many of those. At 9:45 minutes, and at 10:30, adjournment. Great. Is there anybody here for Community Input? I can't see anybody with these chairs.
Okay, let me move those.
If we don't mind, just kind of...
Now, is somebody taking minutes this evening?
We've got a...
Guess that's me.
Oh, that's you, Tim. Okay.
Watch the tape later to verify how accurate I am.
Great.
With the first agenda item with the members of the Planning Board is 7:15.
Yes.
I thought we might go out of order and take the item in my Town Administrator's Report regarding the end-of-year transfers. Priscilla's here to...
Yes, that's excellent idea. Let's do that.
I'll give you back a chair. Well, need a microphone.
Hi, Priscilla. Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, Priscilla. You want to walk us through these transfers?
Yes, we're doing these transfers tonight with not all the bills into the system yet due to a double, you know, a split payroll, a new police contract to figure out, and some, you know, Bonnie's death. Things have been slower than normal, and it's pretty hard to think right now. But I've gone, I, we did our best. Oh, I have bills for you. I'll bring them in after. We did put some bills in. Payroll got done, so that's the important thing. And so, these are the transfers that I recommend for both the Finance Committee and the Selectmen to approve. In the Selectmen's Budget, $13,500 due to the Fire Chief's search expenses, $3,800 for VOC Ed for, we received an additional tuition bill very recently, and there's going to be some money in VOC Ed, but we have to encumber $20,000 for the transportation. They bill later.
Excuse me, that's our bill and not a school bill?
That's our bill. Yep. $10,000 to Town Hall for contract expenses. There was quite a bit of contract, you know, there was a contract increase because of the munis upgrade, so that's another one. And then, $87,700 toward the school elevator. The school elevator, we have two, two contracts have been signed for that for somewhere around And we're doing that in FY19 because that's when the contracts were signed. Asking to have the money taken from $90,000 from group insurance, $10,000 from unemployment, and $15,000 from the Treasurer's Budget, which all add up to $115,000, $115,000 on both ends.
This is what's known at the moment, and then Priscilla can tell you that maybe a need for a subsequent meeting. I think we talked about that this morning, but it might be wise to post that, and if we don't need it, we don't need it.
I'm thinking maybe if you could post one for next Monday, because by then I will have everything. And there's, there's some in some departments, but until all the numbers are done, I don't know if anything else will go over. This is the best, this is the best I could do for tonight.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 33 Bravo, to approve year-end transfers between various line items of the fiscal year 2019 budget as detailed above.
Give me a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, is everybody available on Monday for an extra meeting if we have to?
I guess morning's probably...
For an, or morning?
That's true, if we just need a quorum.
Yeah. Yeah. I think so. Tuesday, Wednesday.
That is July 15th, correct?
I'm trying, we've got a guest staying on the boat overnight on Sunday night.
We could do it maybe later in the morning, because I'm coming back from Rockport, too, so a little later is better for me.
You can meet at the same time the Finance Committee is meeting, you know, like it doesn't matter.
Later in the morning's better for me, too.
Okay, so what's, like 11?
Or early afternoon is fine.
Early afternoon would be better.
Early afternoon?
Say 1:00.
Sounds great.
1:00.
Okay. And we'll just come find you in the office.
No, we have to be together.
No, but I mean, or we'll meet...
We have to post this.
We'll have to post it.
Could be posted, but...
Could you post it?
I can try to remember.
Yep.
Parlament room?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, hang on. Edit.
All right, 1:00 PM.
1:00 PM, July 15th. Okay. And at that point, do you think you'll have another warrant or no?
I probably will have another warrant on Fri, my, my hope is Friday.
Okay.
This Friday.
Well, you'll let me know about that.
Yep.
I just want to remind everybody about the warrants. We have had a vote in the past authorizing me and Alan to be the single signer on warrants whenever necessary. We'll report back to the, if we are the ones that end up having to sign. It's not necessary for all the Selectmen to sign all of the warrants, and I just want to remind everybody that that was a vote that we took a while back, and that we will be using that tool so that we don't have to call a lot of meetings or have everybody be coming in all the time unnecessarily. Okay?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else on your...
Let me think.
Report that could be done quickly so that, because we still have five minutes, and I, I think the Planning Board is adjourned to the lobby.
I can, I can go through some of the items.
Okay. Would you just tell, what about this, okay, the New York, this emergency notification system?
Okay, well, this, this actually, the Board, maybe a year and a half or so ago, voted to switch to the Rave Alert System from Blackboard Connect. It has much the same functionality, actually virtually identical. It's about half the cost, so at the time, we said we'd make the switch. We couldn't make the switch during the year, so we had to kind of write out the remainder of the, the contract with the Blackboard Connect. So now, we're in the process, I'm working with them to transfer over employees and officials' data. Citizens who want to continue to receive alerts do have to opt into the system, so we have a, a link here, and we can make sure that the newspaper gets it as well. It's on our website, that people have to actively click on that link and put in their information if they want to continue to receive emergency alerts from the town.
Yeah, I think this is important enough that we may need to think about how we're going to publicize this, other than the mosquito and a link on the website.
Yeah.
Because this is important. This is emergency information.
And we're coming up with hurricane season.
And we're coming up with hurricane season, he says.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Well, I actually, I actually sent out a message on the Blackboard system telling people the transition and telling them they had to...
Well, that's actually a good idea, but those are...
And maybe the COA could, we could...
Yeah, we can put it, we can make sure it's in a lot of different places.
Someone from the COA about publicizing this new emergency number and that people have to opt in.
Oh, sure, we'll put it in our newsletter. Our next, we need to pub, we would need to have the information by the first week in August to get in for September.
Be a while, okay.
But we have that weekly electronic newsletter that we can get out any, anytime.
But beyond that, even maybe some people will need assistance to log in, to get their, to opt in, to get on the computer. We might be, we might work through the library as well whenever they come to do other things. I mean, we need to think creatively about how to get that information out.
Now, what's, what's the stand-up date on this?
We're shooting for August 1st.
August 1st.
August 1st, okay.
Put it out last week, but we can put it out...
I mean, can people start going in now, or?
Oh, yeah, you can, right now, people can sign up for it.
Okay.
And we, I don't know, we might want to do some of the other, you know, like the Parents Connection, get them to send something out, and what is it called, Sitting on a Hill?
Probably in the woods.
Sitting in the Woods.
Right.
Yeah, so, right, but anyway. So, who would, who would drive that publicity? Is that something, Tim, you would do?
Yes, yes, for the Board, I can.
Okay.
I can make sure that that gets out.
Another thing to do.
Add it to the list of, but no, we want to get people...
Oh, here they come.
And here comes the Planning Board.
Sign on.
It's a parade.
Yes. Come and join us, please. I, you might want to...
Want to come sit up front? Sure, grab, there's some chairs there.
Chairs for everybody.
You have to call your meeting to order, I take that.
Yeah. Hi, how you doing?
No, Tom. Tom Lane.
I think he accepts.
He is, yeah. We brought a proxy.
You brought a proxy, okay.
So, as vice-chair of the Planning Board, we have four members of the Planning Board here, recommend an appointment to the Planning Board.
Okay.
Of a third year, of a three-year associate member, Tom Lane, of 128 Bingham Road.
Well, I happen to know that he's an excellent candidate. He was, worked by my side when I was on the Planning Board 17 years ago, and I have nothing but good things.
George just showed me his resume. He's been 20 years either as an elected member of the Planning Board or an associate member.
Wow.
He had a gap of a year and a half in 2012, so, no, he's, he's been great, and he'll be, and yes, he has confirmed that he would like to do this.
Then I will move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 11, and in accordance with Section 7.2 of the Town of Carlisle zoning bylaws, to reappoint Tom Lane of 128 Bingham Road to serve as an associate member of the Planning Board.
I'll second it.
Any further...
Can you add it for a three-year term?
I can. To serve as an associate member of the Planning Board for a three-year term, expiring June 30, 2022.
22, I think.
2021, 22.
22. Last time I counted, 19.
Second.
Do you guys have to vote on this as well?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Did you, did you call your meeting to order before you got here?
I called this meeting to order retroactively to 7:15.
Okay. So, you guys are now in session?
We are now in session, yes.
All right, and we have mostly down the table. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye. That was unanimous. Tell Tom I'm sorry. No, he's...
Thank you all for your service, yes.
Thank you as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Planning Board could stick around and see the rest.
Yeah, it would be. Okay.
I like your T-shirt.
Tom Lane needs to be sworn in before Monday's meeting, but we have a Planning Board meeting on the 15th.
Okay, so all he has to do is come in to town, see Mary, Dale, ready?
No, you know that that will be happening.
Oh, yeah, okay, great.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. I am going to wait until 7:30 for our Community Center update. I know you guys are here and ready, but because it was posted at this time, and I'm, because I'm hoping that there will be interested people who may have read the agenda and will come in that time or tune in, at that time, I'm going to ask you to wait just a little longer before I take you on the agenda. Thank you, Jerry, and that one, too. I can't see you either, it's very frustrating. Is the chief going to come in for the payroll? Because we have questions.
Oh, he is not. He is not coming tonight. If you have questions, you can, you know, I can communicate to them where they...
Okay, great.
They're a monthly payroll, so there's an opportunity to, you know, bring it back if we have to.
Yeah, we actually had it in...
If desired, if there's questions.
Does he need to be here for us to prove it?
David? David? I'm sorry, we're trying to meet. It's hard to do it with the side conversation going on. Were you asking a question?
Does he need to be here for us to...
Well, someone has to answer the question.
Somebody has to answer the question.
We don't, we don't know, there's, there's a whole bunch of things, like...
That's what I thought, okay.
Grade changes, and...
So, we'll have to wait on that.
...in spots where there's no name assigned and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can...
I don't know what any of that means, yeah.
How, so how do you...
Let me try to get, let me try to get in touch with him now, and see if he can come down.
Yeah, let's just see if he can come down.
Otherwise, we gotta push it to the...
Right, right.
All right, I'll go.
Okay.
I think I'm gonna...
All right.
Put a firearm over there.
It's a good thing you're on the Emergency Planning Committee.
You know, we could probably do the Complete Streets, Luke's not here, but it's just...
Yes, well, I know he's not, but I have, again, well, we will discuss it.
Okay.
So, we're going to move on to the Complete Streets until we know more about that. Last time we talked about committee appointments, we looked at the Pathways 2 Committee, and we saw that three of the five or six people had moved away, and three people had declined to be reappointed, so we had no members. And the question was, could we at all, could we roll that into Complete Streets Committee? And I'm still interested in discussing that, deciding it, and just making a decision. And I think, I just, you know, we are so stretched thin for volunteers to make two committees when there's, that sort of kind do the same thing. I mean, I know that the, the Complete Street Committee focus, the initial focus at least, will be the implementation of that, that grant money that we got, and that's, that's fine, but to make such a narrow-purposed, narrowly purposed committee that's just going to have that one thing to do, I don't think is good use of our resources. So, I was going to suggest that in the second paragraph, we say, "This committee's initial focus is the implementation of approved Complete Streets projects, as well as assessing providing solutions for," and why there's a comma there.
Yeah, I took that out.
Oh, I see, "for," comma, "potential obstacles to," comma, "the successful completion of these projects in the Town of Carlisle." Okay. "The Complete Streets Committee will recommend short-term and long-term steps, planning and policy adoption necessary to create a comprehensive and integrated transportation," and I would like to add, "and pathway network serving the needs of all users." And I think we're done. I don't think we need to do much more than that. Secondly, I was looking at the membership. One Selectman, fine. One Traffic Safety Advisory Committee member, that's great, except that the chief of the police and the fire chief, I thought...
Were on that.
Were on that. So, that makes no sense to me. Then there's a gazillion non-voting members, again, where I'm not sure why we need them. And the Town Administrator was one of the non-voting members. I think he should be one of the voting members. He is our Town Administrator. He is the one that's going to be responsible for the contracts. I don't see why he shouldn't be voting on this and directing a lot more of it. But I don't know, maybe not.
Well, it can be, it just puts him in a, maybe a difficult political position at times, which might not be the most comfortable place to be.
Well, if that's true, if that's true, I will, you know, withdraw that. But I just think of these non-voting members, maybe we could pick one or say, why, I mean, why are there seven non-voting?
Well, the Pathways Committee member would come off of this if we're basically merging the two groups.
That's right.
So, there wouldn't be a separate Pathways Committee member.
So, that's not one. Then they have master planning, and again, I think a master planning member maybe should just be a member.
Yeah.
Why not?
I don't know why they're not voting.
I mean, why are they non-voting? And then, leave off the planning, Planning Board can visit as many times as they want in historic districts as well, but not all our roads are in historic and pathways. Well, I mean, unless we, what do you think?
Well, I, I mean, I guess I'd like to hear Luke's rationale for making that separation, but...
Yeah, yeah, but also, so many, one, two, three, five non-voting, seven voting, and five non-voting, I mean, just, it's just unwieldy and not, so, I think we're not going to do this one tonight unless and until we find out, unless somebody wants to, you know, make up some sort of motion so that we can get moving on getting this, and we can amend it later.
Well, why don't I, I think I'd agree that we need to hear from Luke about what his thinking was. I'm happy to reach out to him before the next meeting and share some of our comments and ideas and have him have this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Sounds good?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Another thing, sort of done. Not really.
Delayed.
I'm trying to get things done, but it's really hard sometimes. We only have five minutes. Another thing that could be short on the administrat, oh, you know what, we could do the cemetery deeds.
Yes.
Those are always short.
I've got them here.
Short and sweet.
Well, there are quite a few of them this time.
Yes, I know, but still, yeah, okay.
You want me to start with the motions?
Yes, go.
Cemetery deed 731, move that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Eduardo and Barbara Manisi of 1018 East Street at Green Cemetery Lot D-258 Graves 1 and 2.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Alfred and Ann Windall of 11 Lucille Avenue at Green Cemetery Lot D-258 Graves 1 and 2.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer land in the public burial ground to Bruce Cumgene, 314 River Road at Green Cemetery Lot A70, Grave 1.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I just have one other thing on the, on the deeds. Once again, the word processor keeps putting me in is Alan Brown.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we can't sign them tonight?
No. We just cross it out.
No. That's not, because these are nice, these are deeds.
I don't know, somewhere there's a glitch in that system.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I object to that.
Five more minutes, we're still, I feel like we can't move slowly enough. I don't want to do number three, that's going to take a little more time. And, you know, that was not in my packet, was this?
I brought copies of it, I thought that was in.
Is this what you're talking about?
No.
Okay. I got this from Jen to give to you.
Oh, I already had mine, but, okay. Well, I guess, why did you go, no, we didn't get minutes because Jen wasn't able to process them.
Were you able to brief the fire chief?
I just sent him a message, I had her back, but...
Yeah, okay. Do, do, do we, do we have any liaison reports?
No.
No? Okay.
Well, I guess, no, I'm not, where do you want to hear about the recycling?
Under 8:45.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Why don't you guys set up? Take a couple of minutes, set your things up. We'll get started.
Start by doing a little preamble.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, sure.
Yeah, then, then you can be heard if you sit in front of the mic.
So, I'd like to start by giving some background. In 2017, the Caring for Carlisle Health Assessment Survey was conducted, and that survey uncovered several significant issues of concern, transportation, health, and social connections. In June 2018, Carlisle received a grant from Chanah 15 for $30,000 to address these concerns. I'd like to take a moment to thank Linda Fantasia, Carlisle's health agent, for initiating the grant process and shepherding it through once it was received. The funding for the grant was divided among three things, a public health nurse, a transportation pilot program, and a community center feasibility study, which is what we're going to talk about tonight. Community Center Advisory Group was formed with representatives from the Board of Health, the Council on Aging, Recreation Commission, School Committee, and the Planning Board. The purpose of the group was to engage a consultant and determine how the town might use a community center, the ideal size of the building, possible interior layouts, and possible site location. An RFQ was generated, several candidates were interviewed, and Abacus Architects and Planners were hired as consultants to help with the process, to provide alternate plans for review and a preliminary building design. The advisory group analyzed existing programs run by each of the groups that might use a community center to determine their current space requirements. The COA looked at all the services and programs currently running at Town Hall, FRS, St. Irenes, the library, and numerous other places. RecCom looked at the programs they run in Town Hall, the brick building, various playing fields, swimming pools around town, and other places. The Board of Health looked at health clinics and emergency shelter and emergency dispensing site. The Town Clerk looked at the possibility of using the community center as what might be a multi-precing polling place with better parking and access than Town Hall. The goal was to produce drawings that could be used for fundraising, also to gather information that would feed into the master plan. The idea is that the needs and proposed solutions could be reviewed during, as part of the Master Plan Outreach Program, to generate a clear sense in the town of the need for a community center and to prioritize the timing and funding of it relative to other town needs. The advisory group didn't look at sites other than 338 Bedford Road, since the town already owns that land, and its use is restricted to recreation and/or a community center. No other current town-owned properties seem to meet the needs of both the COA and RecCom. 338 Bedford Road is close to the school and the recreation fields and the town center, and school kids can get there without having to cross any highways. There's also the opportunity to use some of Banta Davis for parking and access without affecting the future recreation use and other town needs of that land. There's also the availability of the ever-popular wastewater treatment plant. That said, the program analysis that we've done about space requirements are not particular to that specific site. If the master plan were to identify another site somewhere else that satisfies the needs of the town... of the town, the space requirement analysis that we've done would apply equally well to a different site. So with guidance from Abacus and allowing for growth and new programs, it was determined that a 15,000-square-foot building with more than 100 parking spots would be appropriate for Carlisle now and into the future. So now, to the good part. I'd like to introduce David Eisen and his associate Julie Patton, who will present several possible site plans for 338 Bedford Road, some using parts of Banta Davis.
Yeah.
Can the lights be dim?
Yes, it can be.
Boy, those high-back chairs are, get you in trouble.
They do.
They make us feel important.
Ah, the important thing.
They're the big boy chairs.
The chairs are important, you don't need the chairs. Yeah, that's terrific.
We've seen it before.
Oh, no. Okay, there you go. The individuals look good. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Our involvement with the town of Carlisle goes back to 2013 when we were hired to master plan 338 Bedford Road with two anticipated uses, one was the group home, and one was a community center with the idea that the group home was the highest priority. So we worked with, we had a series of public meetings, we attended boards and committees, we did a master plan that suggested the appropriate place for the location of the group home, and as you all know, it was built. So we're really happy to be back here looking at, can't really call it phase two, but looking at the opportunity to build a community center. So I'm not going to read all of this, Jerry's gone through a lot of this, but the point of this is to kind of make the case from everything we've seen and heard that a community center is actually needed to define some of the character and quality. You know, as Jerry noted, there aren't many places for people to get together, and that's important for the social life of the building. There are stay-at-home parents, there are people who work from home, there are seniors who need a place to go. Council on Aging, they do a lot of stuff, but it's very limited by the facilities. They're always in borrowed places, they're always competing with other organizations. Recreation Department lacks some of the facilities they need to do their job for a community like this. They have swimming lessons, but they borrow people's backyard pools. A multi-generational community center seems like the way to go. We're working with a whole series of towns, we're doing four other master planning studies for cities, well, they're all towns in the region, and most are considering multi-generational centers because it builds support. It's for kids, it's for seniors, it's for parents, it's for everybody. And a town with limited budgets and limited space, multi, multiple uses of rooms makes a vast amount of space. The program came out of, you know, input from a whole bunch of different people. Community center needs a bunch of parking. If you have a 4,000-square-foot space, you have a lot of people there. Certainly, next to the Banta Davis site allows the parking to be shared with baseball games and other things that happen when there isn't such intensive use. To build it requires some town funding, however, user fees, rentals, we're working with the town of Midfield, they did a study before we came on board that suggested they could pay for their multi-generational community center in 10 years with user fees and rentals. So I'm certainly not going to make that price to you, that case to you, but it can be a source of income as well as an expense. So what we've done is really very conceptual plans to suggest what's possible. So we developed the program, and there's a site, and the next step is a kind of test fit, what will, could, should fit on the property that you have. So this is the, here in the group home, here's the remainder of the property, the Mosley property. This is Google Earth, it shows the house still in place even though it's been torn down. This is the land we have to work with, the ball field, so here, the road coming through, and the cemetery, and I know the town-owned land extends this way and this way, but this is the area that we've been focusing on. So one way, one thing you can do is just use the space behind the group home on the Mosley property. So what we've done here is very sort of conceptually lay out what a building could look like. You could say this is a building plan, but it's, you know, kind of very early, it's a bubble diagram to scale, which suggests an entry, which suggests a kind of lobby, lounge, multipurpose space that's open to the view, there are a series of function rooms, function rooms and offices, function rooms, and a large, you know, great room that could accommodate a range of programs with folding walls that open and close, and then a kitchen. The kitchen can be serviced directly from the road for meals on wheels or catering to serve this, to serve this room. All of this can be pushed and pulled, but this is what a 15,000-square-foot community center looks like on the site.
That's all one floor?
Yes. Now, now, it's just, you read my mind, it could be on two floors, that's also a possibility. Upsides and downsides, the upside obviously is smaller footprint, on the other hand, you need two, minimum of two stairs, you need an elevator, so having made it smaller, you have to make it bigger again. It separates out functions. We've done a number of two-story multi-generational community centers, well, two of them, both of them were on slopes, so they're both in grade, so we're certainly not going to suggest that it couldn't be two stories, but at least preliminarily, we wanted to look at what it would look like at one floor. And one, and swimming pool in back, that seemed to be what we're hearing from Recreation as an essential component of this. And, you know, then there are locker rooms and changing rooms. So we get about 80 parking spaces, which is not considered enough when there are a series of activities going on. So one of the tentative conclusions we've come to is it's tough to fit all of this onto the property. And we could do a two-story building, we're still not going to get anywhere close to the, you know, 110 parking spaces that seems to be needed. And of course, this slopes away, we have the wetlands, we've set back some wetlands, so there are constraints on the site besides just the limited space. So the next thing we looked at is using the parking on top of the leaching field, which is, you know, the leaching field is about six feet above grade here, but it slopes down and the grade slopes up, so if cars come in off the road, you can ramp up, you can park here. And then we, there's parking around a green space, so there's a kind of green space that you could use for a frisbee or, you know, lots of different sort of more informal sports activities. And then, and just to go back for a second, here's the ball field now. We've shown another ball field, which isn't there, but because there had been plans proposed for another ball field. So when we moved here, what we're saying is, we get rid of that ball field, and, oh, and let me just call, I'm sorry, that you could move this ball field over to here, parking in green space, and the building faces Banta Davis, it faces the ball fields, it faces the road, and one thing to mention is the road that leads to the group home. Well, I think everyone agreed in 2013 and agrees now that this will not be the entry to the community center, that this will be the entry to the group home, and there may be a fire lane here, but the entry to the community center will be off of the Banta Davis Road. So, community center, very, very similar layout, facing all of this with, here's the entry, then looking out over the pool, and, you know, this is, I mean, it's freezing half the time, but the six months of the year when it's not, to have outdoor, to have the pool, to have outdoor space, to really focus out with the woods as a backdrop, and there's the sense that people sort of liked this scheme as opposed to the previous one, that it seemed to work pretty effectively, and it gives some more space between the group home and the community center allows this, if you ever wanted to expand, you could expand it a little bit. Seemed like a pretty good layout. And we looked at a third option, which says, well, you're going to put most everything on the Banta Davis property except some parking, so here's parking over the leaching field, here's additional parking. You wouldn't have to put a ball field here, but we've shown that ball field just to say, you know, instead of building the community center on the Mosley property, you build it on the Banta Davis property, and some of the recreational facilities can be on Mosley. And really, to look at all of this as kind of one property rather than two, I understand there are probably some legal issues there, but, you know, it's town-owned, and to think, you know, what works most effectively and then figure out what needs to be done in order to make that happen. So having done these sort of three conceptual layouts, you know, we put together, and you'll see it over there, this was at Old Home Day, we had the program here, all the different spaces that are included, the kind of layout of the building and the pool, and this is similar in all the schemes, and, you know, if you had one scheme over another, this could be pushed and pulled, and then the site plan. So the idea was to get this out in front of the public, to kind of build excitement, to say, we're thinking ahead, you know, we're moving forward, you know, this is where we're at. And my understanding is it was quite, I was out of the country, I would have been at Old Home, they stand, you know, next to the board, taking the blame and the credit, but my understanding was that it's been fairly well-received. And then, you know, this is one of many, many, many steps in terms of public engagement, whether it's the public at large, whether it's boards and committees or different stakeholders, you know, that over the, I don't know, the short or long term, you know, getting the input to continue to build support. And one thing I did notice is, this is also, can be used as an emergency shelter, so the idea is to make this as useful as possible for as many purposes as possible, you know, to really leverage the resources of the town as effectively as possible. So that's where we're at right now.
David, I've got one comment and a question. Could you go back to the Google View for a second?
Yep.
So one of the concerns there, even before you guys were engaged, although I think it's kind of apparent, was coming in that it was kind of a, it was kind of a known, it was known that if any building was built on the back of Mosley property, that the access road, as you said, wouldn't be through where the group home is, so it would be over there, as you're indicating. And there was some concern that that traffic would be coming by the ball field. So I think that if you now, if you go to option B, I think that that's a miller, a miller at five.
Essentially, we're pushing the ball field out of the way.
Right, right. So I don't know what people think of that, but I wanted to point that out because it had come up even several years ago.
And, yeah, that's always been a concern because the leaching field is there. Everything we've heard suggests it's too expensive to move, and it's needed, so there's your kind of throat, so.
And the question I had had, I don't know what other people think, to me, it seems like a good idea to use the leaching field for parking, and I'd kind of talked about multiple purposes. But the other thing, question I had, and I wish I had kind of asked this offline, but I suppose you'll be able to answer, is no matter what people think about the size and what ultimately the cost could be, what I have seen in other communities, for example, I think it was Franklin that I was at recently, they built a second story, but they had built the initial first story, and they only had it like planned if they needed it to build a second story. So is it more, much more expensive to do, to build that first story within anticipation that there could be a second story at some point, or do you just, or is it the same regardless?
Well, the big expense is elevator and stairs, and you probably want to plan in advance to put those in. You certainly don't want to build them if it's only one floor. And then the structure, it's certainly probably easier and cheaper, let's say, here, to say you could expand here, you know. Expanding horizontally is probably easier than cheaper than expanding up. It's certainly something to consider. You know, as is potentially building two-story right from the start, this isn't to suggest that that's not possible, but the bigger picture of planning for expansion is definitely something to do. I mean, that's the biggest concern about this. It doesn't even fit at the size that they're barely. And you build it and they will come. I mean, what often happens is community centers today, they're open, they're already too small because everyone's totally excited and everyone wants to do stuff there.
I noticed the new ball field on the upper left-hand corner looks a little bit smaller than what you have right now. Do you know if it's dimensionally the same size as what you replaced?
I think, I mean, I didn't like fully measure, but what I ended up doing was I, if you go back to the Google Earth, David, I pretty much just copied that little line there that you see of the existing ball field and colored it green and mirrored the exact same one.
It does approach the corner of the private lot on the back of the ball field, so I was wondering if it limits the fan or the extent of the outfield. That's a property line, that's private property, the yellow corner.
Right, right. Yeah, we'd have to look, we'd have to look into it, I'm not sure, I didn't, yeah, we'd have to see if that's, you know, that requires some-
There also is a question, is that necessarily the correct orientation for the ball?
Yeah, right.
Right, you can flip it around. I think that Recreation, which Holly were here, had had plans for a ball field in that position, but I don't know if it's facing, if their plans are, is it facing where it's facing?
And that's what's been suggested. This was just taken from something that had already been proposed, whether it's what you want, you know, that made it easy to say, oh, it's already in the table, let's work up for that.
Is this building anticipated to be slab on grade, or were you thinking full, you know, full foundation so that, you know, you could expand down?
You know, and-
Or at least have, you know, lots, because I'm sure Recreation has lots of stuff, you know, the storage needs.
And that should definitely be planned. The difficult thing with having it in a basement is, well, then you need an elevator and then you need stairs.
Not if it's storage, I mean, it seems to me if they have, you know, noodles and flotation devices for the pool, you know, where are they going to put, you know, you can either have an outside shed, which is pretty ugly, or you could, you know, have some sort of bulkhead or render something like that so they can get down.
And then there are accessibility issues associated with that, because there was a staff person who was confined to a wheelchair and they wouldn't, but there's a cost issue, you know, so I think slab, I think a basement would be a pretty expensive way, I mean, maybe, you know, if you have a partial basement, you know, in the past, when we looked at basements in these kinds of buildings, they disappeared pretty quickly when we started getting costs estimated.
Is there ledge there?
Well, we don't know. There's a question.
We know that the existing home that was there had a basement.
It did, okay.
That's all that I can say.
Yeah, and before, we went too far, you know, but it doesn't seem like there's ledge there. I mean, you know, so if it was a slab on grade, you'd be pretty safe. I mean, it's not, it's a reasonable question, but that's my sense, that figure out what you need and build it at a ground level and it'll be easier and more cost-effective.
If there were an attic for storage, does that have the same accessibility issues?
I mean, in theory, yes, if it's part of the kind of life of the building and there was storage up there and the person in a wheelchair couldn't get up there to get it, you know, it would be a problem. You know, and then there's sort of the reality factor of how you use it, and it's the kind of thing you have to like, shh, you know, don't tell anyone, you know. So what we would recommend is figure out what you need, you know, let's plan for it, let's plan for expansion, and as things develop, if there's a way to sort of have that overflow space-
Sure.
You know, why not?
In terms of citing in your various options, one would certainly have to consider solar cells, and if one of these-
And is one of these more conducive to that? I assume north is kind of off this way?
And where's our?
North, north is to the right.
To the right, yeah.
And I'm sorry, we always put on north arrows. I don't know why they got cut off there. They should be there, so. I mean, I would say, you know, the trees are an issue. I mean, let's just say you had a flat roof, I mean, which is not a given, but you just cover the whole thing and they face south, no matter what the building orientation is. Tall trees will shade it.
But it looks like most of the issues are to the south, well, yeah, they're to the south unfortunately.
The canopy's over the leaching field.
And if this is something.
Actually, no, you can't because they require stanchions to go down into the leaching field. We've had that problem somewhere else.
But if this is something that's important to Carlisle, like, we can work with that. You know, we can take that into consideration of how we design the building.
And we want to build as much lead as we can. Similarly, right, with the building itself. Making that as efficient as possible, as green as possible.
And that helps build enthusiasm if there's clearly a commitment to sustainable energy, to reducing energy use, to orientation, to maximize passive solar.
Especially if you're gonna have a pool.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, indeed.
And it could be, you could have solar to heat the pool to extend the life, you know, into September or October.
Well, I don't know what the kids require these days in terms of full temperature.
I don't know, but then it could be used by adults as well.
Yeah, but this is the first week that full temperatures have been into the eighties that are not heated artificially.
Yeah.
No, it'd be definitely something early on to consider. And what is the town's agenda? I mean, and we're not at that point yet. I mean, do you want to pursue a lead? You know, this conceivably could be passive house, which is zero energy, you know, net zero. Does the town want to make a commitment to that? It does add to the cost, but going forward, it reduces the cost. And can you get subsidies for it? So lots of questions.
We would absolutely want to.
Sure, bow off, be investigated.
To investigate that.
Yeah, yep.
How many parking spaces in that configuration are there?
There are.
One, it says, it says there's eighty-eight in this one.
Then the other one that you showed, with the, when it's on the.
The one with the U there is about a hundred and thirty, I believe.
And, oh, and that's, yeah, that's B, right. That's the biggest, right?
That's the biggest one, yeah.
That's not counting the parking over by the ball field, or it is?
It is. Well, wait, which one?
It's only the new parking.
It's not counting this little in there, but it's counting all around.
Okay.
So it's counting on.
The leaching field and around the green space.
Yes, yes.
And the spots closest to the entryway are the handicap spots?
Yeah, yes.
This area over here.
Jerry, was that the recreation department meeting last night? I saw some positive feedback. Did they have a preference in terms of which?
Not really. Drew preferred option C.
He did, okay.
They didn't pick a parking position.
Yeah, that's interesting. And some of the COA board also liked option C.
Can you flip the head? This is B.
That's B, yeah.
And then it was pointed out that, and I don't, and I'm gonna make this comment because other people made it, not necessarily because there's not an answer. But it looks like in this one on option C, you're kind of facing the parking wall because there's a retaining wall in front of the parking. Whereas B, in our meetings, B seemed to be the compromise. And also, most of the building, if not all the building is actually on Mosley, it's just the parking that's on Banta. I'm not expressing preference, I'm just relaying what other people have mentioned. But Kate, I think in the meeting you liked it better, yeah.
For me, it was my preference. I find it very welcoming and open feeling. And I like the fact that you're getting more parking for the little league things because we used to park up and down the street there. So it wasn't adequate parking for the ball fields really. So that helps that out.
And being welcoming is a critical part of this. And, you know, this is not a welcoming site to the extent you can, you don't necessarily know it's there. Unless you know it's there, it's not in the center of town. But to make as much of a kind of connection to people as possible is a great thing. And, yeah, would you see, would you see it from here? Probably just maybe looking down the drive, you might catch a glimpse, but barely.
Nice signage from the road. You'll have to have nice signage from the roads. Please go.
Center this way.
Put a traffic light.
One of our crosswalks.
Add a crosswalk.
Well, certainly, issues have come up, traffic issues have come up and safety issues have come up, but.
Yeah, because the pathway is on the other side of two twenty-five, right.
And there also is the issue that the entryway, the existing entry on the Banta Davis doesn't have great sightlines.
No, it doesn't.
And if there's a lot of traffic going in and out in on two twenty-five, it's a little dicey.
Yeah.
Well, I agree.
And sort of doing a traffic planning exercise, and I don't know how much is going to be done or not done as part of the master planning. There's certainly, you know, the town like master plan, they're certainly probably not going to do, you know, traffic studies for this area. But it's certainly something to think about, and I know that they're gonna touch on it, is, you know, all kinds of transportation and pedestrian and bike access and, you know, what the challenge is. And even without the community center, I mean, Banta Davis is certainly an area that attracts a lot of attention. So it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that master plan.
One thing no one has mentioned, but because it's cut off on this slide, but the, kind of, one of the existing informal seasonal community centers is right across the street, Kimball's.
Yeah.
So you do have to consider making the safety connecting these two sites where people want to go.
Well, maybe Kimball's can set up in the kitchen and they do a little snack bar. I'm only halfway kidding. I mean, I mean, if kids are swimming here, they could be dishing out ice cream at the same time.
If you were blowing that up programmatically, kind of like is like the blow up that was done by, who was it? Annie, while you guys were on vacation. She put that together on quick notice. But people can't really see, probably people at home, but there's quite a few different things in this building. There's that we wouldn't, that no one department would have thought of by themselves. For example, there's a teen room. And the council on aging certainly wouldn't have thought about that by themselves. But there's various types of exercise rooms. And that great room would be invaluable in terms of serving food. You know, we get sixty to eighty people to our lunches at FRS and St. Irene and Congregational Church.
And the idea with the great room is that it would be larger than the Clark Room, but smaller than the school auditorium.
So it would fit, that's a very good point. I like that point because it fits an intermediate need. And it would be larger than the Hollis Room at the library as well, which is a great presentation room, but it will only hold fifty or sixty people.
Are there locker rooms and shower facilities and that kind of stuff?
Yes.
They weren't going to be originally until Linda brought up the use of the building as a shelter.
Well, the pool also. When you add the pool, you mean the locker room as well.
Yeah, right, right.
And this is set up with changing rooms here, so you can have a separate like drop-off for kids going to the pool. And you can go straight in here, although this is the main entrance for most activities.
But it also can be set up so that you could access the locker rooms if the rest of the building is closed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are there capabilities in the building? I mean, I know it's gonna consolidate a lot of things. Can you do some things in this building other than the pool that you can't do now otherwise?
There is an exercise room. And the idea there is that there would be key card access or in the middle, we would have treadmill machines, bicycles, stuff like that.
We have an example of that in NADIC. It's, for very small actual fees for the town population, it supports not only the maintenance of the exercise equipment, but it supports somebody to be there to manage the building from, I think, like five o'clock to eight o'clock. You know, that extra hours' time that some people would use maybe after work.
And NADIC's quite a bit bigger because they have a full gymnasium, which isn't sound. So that's probably about twenty-five thousand square feet.
Right, if you cut off their gymnasium, that's like forty percent of the whole building.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty.
And I think it's still a bit bigger than this, but not that much bigger because it's got the, that does have a second floor.
Right.
So in, and further to elaborate on your question, there are, there are spaces in this building that would be better than, like, for instance, this room is used for exercise, this is not a great floor for.
No, I understand, yeah. No, I was thinking about types of activities rather than the quality of the space.
Well, the idea is that one of the, one of the program rooms would have a heart rhythm floor suitable for dancing, so that dance classes would happen there.
And then multiple uses, so it's, you know, jazzercise in the morning for the seniors and then the kids come over and do whatever it is they, you know, they do. So over the three or four times a day, the uses, the uses might change.
There are actually some computer rooms in there as well. In fact, which made me, I guess I was telling you guys, I was also on the library focus groups and there seemed to be like some overlapping.
Ideas.
Ideas, needs slash uses. So, you know, possibly some of the computer things that happen at the, or some of the conflicts of when the kids come to use the computers for the older people, that this will help relieve some of that. And that, you know, the library also talked about having a, you know, branch.
At the building.
And so they could have a small branch there, you know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we, between the, between recreation with the kids and the COA having all these shared activities with the library, it's like coordination in terms of the two buildings is, I don't know, it seems very, very important.
In this, I don't know if there's a way to focus this. This is pretty small, but it's a little fuzzy. And I have handouts here. I didn't give out the handouts because then it's always when the people are looking at the handouts. But these are a little bit more readable in terms of the program, although we sort of talk through what a lot of the spaces are.
We can put it in the record. The handouts will go in the record then.
Is that the same as this? No, different, bigger, easier to see?
I think they're the same. But there's more.
They're a little higher contrast.
One of those rooms in the center there with the circle is a gated, is like a cafe area. So there would be kind of like a chilling.
What it says, library cafe, as I've been called, it said, library cafe.
Lounge.
Lounge, yes.
And what's the rough square footage of that area? I mean, is it big enough to be, what would you guess how big the, yeah?
That's maybe twelve hundred square feet, maybe a little bit bigger.
That three circles section.
And in reality, it could be broken up. You could have built in seating, you know. It wouldn't be just a square, but we just, it hasn't, you know, the design hasn't evolved.
So Barney, I think that this room here is about eight hundred square feet, if I remember correctly. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I just counted the toes and that's about right.
So twelve hundred would be fifty, fifty percent bigger than this.
And all of this will get bigger and smaller, get pushed and pulled.
Right, because we had, the last time there was a meeting, there is also comments that it would be nice to have some publicly accessible bathrooms for when the ball fields are being used and also some feedback about just the general layout, you know, kind of loosening up the corridor mentality. So all of that will definitely be pushed and pulled. But this is your general idea of just the space requirements in box form. But it'll definitely get, you know, a little more fluid as we go on.
This is something that I think, David, you and Julia don't even know, but the advisory group, as they were, when we were putting together space needs, we had a plan of this building on the table in front of us and we were looking at, you know, the comparison. That's, that is about one and a half times this room. We were looking at the comparisons and thinking of the kinds of needs that the town has that are not served by this building or are served by this building but could be better served in this kind of a community center. So there is a, you know, correlation between what's designed here and what, or at least the space, the design is there, is not ours, but the space needs, it was determined that way. The other thing that I thought of in response to the question that Alan brought up is that I think, we talk about this is a multi-generational center, but it's also a multiple-use center. So a number of different things can be going on, would be designed, so a number of different things can be going on at one time and not conflict with each other. I think that's very important.
And I think a lot of these points could make it onto that bullet point list. The idea of the bullet points is that, you know, it's a handout. It's whatever, you know, inappropriate times and places to make the case to people, to talk about multi-use, to talk about, you know, the program is based on an analysis of what the town needs and doesn't have. It's really good background information. If I'm just a citizen thinking, why do I want my taxes raised? Do these guys know what they're doing? Do we need it? Where does it come from? This is all really good stuff.
And also, to your point, another thing, I say it isn't good enough to pick it out, but one of the rooms in there is called a wellness room.
I was gonna say the same thing.
That is kind of the public health nurse office with the exam tables.
I was gonna ask that, yeah.
Social worker.
It's that back, that back purple square on the floor.
And you could do counseling, private counseling.
And it's not shown here, but generally you would have a door from the outside because sometimes people don't want to be seen going in, so, you know, you sneak in the back door. You know, so a lot of this is sensitive to people, come here because they're in need.
We have a mafia people that will have a psychologist like in Sopranos.
Well, this is about the social and, you know, how do we take care of our own? I mean, that's what this is really all about.
Well, as a new person to all of this, this may be totally, already been discussed or not relevant, but I'll just ask, has there, was there any thinking about housing as a piece of this?
No.
So for instance, the idea of a second floor.
But there is a history.
If it's on the Mosley property, it can't be housing.
It can't be, okay. But if it was on Banta Davis, it could be.
You know, what some, what some centers have done is they've had, well, some of the really big ones might even have regular daycare, but more often what I've seen is some form of adult daycare where you have a room that's set aside for that because right now, some people who can't take care of their family members are shipping them off to another town for adult daycare. But in that situation, we probably have to, town probably have to bring in somebody to manage that.
And that would also require an elevator. But I think I'm kind of interested by your idea of housing.
I was thinking about the, you know, and we don't have hard numbers on this, but that we know of examples of older folks that are choosing to move out of town and they'd like to downsize into something smaller, but there's not much available. And so I was just thinking, you know, could you somehow combine some units, smaller units?
And I did not mean to be dismissive when I said no. I mean, it was just an answer to your question.
There's also been some, a lot of studies that show that multiple use. I'm from West Concord, so there was a lot of multiple use there and it was turned out it's a much more secure neighborhood, like on Commonwealth Street, because there are people living there as well as the commercial uses because there's somebody there twenty-four seven. And there's either the commercial use, which protects the residential during the day, or the residential uses, which protects the commercial ones during the nighttime. And this would be, that looks like it might be something that could be followed.
And we did Peter, the conversion of Peter Buckley School in Concord to, it's a senior center and senior housing up above the Housing Authority, so we did that. We just, in Brighton, we did for Jewish community housing for the elderly. The first floor is all community spaces and the fifty-one senior apartments. And in Cambridge, we built for the Cambridge Housing Authority. I mean, so this is affordable. And in Cambridge, we built for the Cambridge Housing Authority, I, I mean, so this is affordable, um, a hundred and four affordable family units and a whole series of community spaces. So the idea of combining them is a great idea. In some ways, as a multi-generational, I guess the way we thought of it, that's the combination. It's a community center and a senior center together, and that's the combination as opposed to, let's say, a senior housing, a senior, senior center. I know housing had been studied, like, up over there, um, and, and this was, you know, this was like years ago, right? I mean, I mean.
It failed.
It's about six years ago.
It what?
It failed.
It failed to get supported. But the idea that at some time in the future, you could have housing there and then people would be walking distance from there is certainly something maybe the town should think about, because I think your, your question is a really good one about, you know, living and playing and working together.
Can you look at those comments?
Great, great, great start.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I, I have a few things to say just to wrap things up.
Well, I'm gonna ask you to come to the table then, because you won't be heard by the cameras.
Okay.
And, and should I just, I'll just leave.
You can just leave those, yeah.
Leave these here.
Set the slides on, turn the lights on.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
I'd like to point out a few things. First of all, all, all the, all the stuff that's happened so far has happened at no cost to the town, so.
Right.
This is all done through grants. Um, and then the next step, whatever that's going to be, um, might involve some money from the town. There might be some private fundraising and all that is yet to be determined. Um, at least for tonight, we're not asking for any sort of formal approval from the selectmen. What we're looking for is just some general sense that we're moving in the right direction. And I'd like to point out that if we use part of Banta Davis, my understanding from talking with town council is that it's controlled jointly by the selectmen, the school committee, and DPW. So putting anything on the Banta Davis side would require approval from those, those three agencies.
Just for the parking, even if it was just the parking.
Right.
Yeah.
And even, even for the road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you have any idea how this might integrate with master planning?
Um, I've been talking with the master planning people and they're aware of what we're doing. Um, as I said before, the needs assessment, space requirement stuff is, is generic.
Mm-hmm.
And whether it, it's a building that's on this site or some other site, the kinds of spaces that we think are needed in a community center are gonna be the same.
Is that fairly well developed now?
I believe so.
Changes from here in terms of that will be minor sorts of things?
I, I think so.
Okay.
Unless, unless, uh, the master plan says, no, we actually need double this, you know, or, but I.
Well, I mean, I've heard some things from the master planning people that they, they like a site that's more in the center of town.
Mm-hmm.
And there are some pros to that. There are some cons. That means that kids coming from school have to get there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's not a lot of a hundred and fifty parking space properties.
But again, I mean, I, I think the town should consider all the possibilities and pick the best.
Well, that's why, that's why, this should be, this has got to be considered in the, in the larger context.
Right.
Um, yeah, I think that, you know, again, but stressed what Jerry said, we're not really asking for anything, but it, but just food for thought. Um, in another week or two, I've been here seven years, and, and right from day one, we have been talking about fundraising. And the problem, there was pushback on the fundraising idea even back then, because it was like, well, we didn't have anything to show people that we're fundraising for and, and, and that property hadn't even been purchased yet, so there wasn't even a, a possible location, much less a definitive location. But I guess what I'd say is that I think that we have had some loss of opportunity, because if you have a, a, where I'm getting, what I'm getting at is I think that we could come to the selectmen at some point and ask for the establishment of a town gift account, so that if people want to donate, they can donate into a, into a gift account.
Yeah.
Because even requests and passive giving, even without doing a major fundraising drive, couldn't hurt.
And I, I could see two parallel fundraising efforts, one for the building, one for the swimming pool.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I, I can see that being somewhat controversial, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and it's also possible to do the building and not do the swimming pool until we've raised the money to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah.
But I would like to commend the, you all.
Yes.
For, um, getting all these departments together to pull the wagon in one direction, you know, instead of, you know, doing a tug-of-war over everything. Um, I think that's what makes this such a successful plan, um, that it is going to be a multi-generational, multi-use, um, facility, uh, that I think a lot of people will be able to find a stake in.
Here's hoping.
There's hoping.
Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, you're on. They, we're on, um, to talk about updates from board members about our, some of our policy and guideline review questions.
Well, I don't have a, I, I'm still gathering information, but I was, you know, tasked with looking into the transfer station and the sticker fee and, um, so I got some very good information from the Household Recycling Committee. You know, they, um, put together some data for the, um, pay-as-you-throw, which I believe, did they come before the Board of Selectmen early, like in the winter or something, or?
Yes.
Yeah, and I know the decision was to wait on that, but, um, they've, they put together some good information, which I, um, you've probably seen, but I will, I will send around again, just about, um, the expense of the transfer station and the income we get. So from, um, the sticker fees, we get about fifty thousand dollars. And we, um, you probably know.
Which, which, well, and please, fifty thousand dollars, which we cannot use to pay for just anything at the transfer station.
Right, it has to go toward.
Transfer station.
Well, it supports the recycling aspects at the, at the transfer station. And I'm, I need to get the exact language of that, of the funds, unless, Tim, you know that offhand, but.
Yeah, I don't.
I haven't gotten the, you know, Priscilla and I have said we'd wait, Priscilla, till after everything was done in terms of year end and then, but, you know, now with Bonnie's death and et cetera, so it'll be a little while before we can sit down together and look at the actual numbers, but, um, and that language about how it can be spent. But I did, um, have a good conversation with Gary Davis about it, and then I, um, it turns out that the, the police dispatcher, um, they, you know, they, as you all know, they sell the stickers, um, and they also keep the information on the number of stickers sold and then the different types. So there's the twenty-five dollar sticker that any resident can buy, and then you can get a second sticker for ten dollars if you have another car you want to put it on. Um, there's a fifty dollar, uh, permit sticker if you, um, have a truckload of things for the construction bin. Um, that's fairly, it, it's very subjective. There's a fifty dollar fee and then there's a hundred and fifty dollar fee. It's basically a pickup load and then a large dump truck load. It doesn't say dump truck, it says, in fact, I got the, one pickup, one pickup truck size load, one large truck size load. So, um, so fifty dollars for the pickup truck size and a hundred and fifty for the one large, um, and so just anecdotally, you know, I have a pickup in our place, it's a small Tacoma pickup truck, and, you know, Gary has seen me come and go, and I brought it the day I was talking to him, and I said, gosh, you know, I've, I've, we've done some repairs on our house or, you know, taking down fencing or whatever, and I've brought a load to put in the construction bin. I didn't even know I was supposed to get a permit. And he said, oh, no, no, you're not big enough. And I said, oh, I, so, so how big is considered, you know, a pickup truck size? And he said, well, if you had loaded yourself, it was really loaded, you know, overloaded, then yes, you might be asked to get the fifty dollar sticker. So it's very subjective.
And that's an annual fee?
No, 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 it's, it's per, per use, per dump, yes, yeah. Um, and then there's an additional, um, permit you have to get, but there's no fee for it. But if you want to bring, dispose large residential items, like home appliances, furniture, non-trash rubbish items, um, from your residence. So you're supposed to get one of these permits and you're supposed to have a valid sticker on file, um, and then you can come and dispose of these large items.
Um, that's completely unenforced.
Yeah, and it's, there's no cost, but, but you're supposed to get one, I guess, so that, um.
There's no cost for this permit?
No, it's just required, I guess, so that you can show, if, if one of the staff at the transfer station questioned you're bringing in, you know, two refrigerators and your oven, whatever, that you had gotten a permit. As a resident, you weren't a contractor.
Gary has helped me unload refrigerators from my trailer without requiring a permit.
So, um, yeah, so, so, so a lot of the, and, and at the police department, um, the dispatcher there, dispatcher Sawyer is who I talked to. It's actually dispatcher Kirk, and I don't know his last name, who, um, is the one that actually keeps the records. And so he's gonna let me know by email exactly the numbers of permits in different categories, but the dispatcher there said, you know, if a contractor comes in and says, and shows me a valid, um, residential sticker from the person he's working for, then we don't ask any questions. We just issue him whichever permit he's asking for, the fifty dollar or the one fifty. And if, um, he, he said if a, if a Carlisle resident who also happens to be a contractor, because we have several in the, in the community, um, when they say, I'm here to get my dump sticker, they don't question whether they are also planning. He said their, their role is simply the selling, selling or giving of these permits, and they don't have any role in enforcement. And for Gary on the other side of it, um, he said, he, he talked at length about just the dynamics at the transfer station and, um, I mean, by and large, I think his general feeling was, you know, most people are getting their stickers and, um, most people try their best to comply with the rules. But there are some individuals in town who either are always looking at the other cars and claiming that people are coming in from other towns and complaining about that, or some individuals who feel strongly that because they pay property taxes, they should not have to be paying any kind of a sticker fee. And so they will just say, I'm not gonna pay, and go on in and dump their trash. Um, and Gary himself said, you know, I had a conversation with somebody about that and yes, I could call the police, but it, it just doesn't seem like.
It'd be easy, we could just raise taxes. I mean, you know, and since they feel they're paying taxes, uh, and we're not charging them for their taxes.
Um, and then there's, and then a couple of other just interesting things about, um, the expenses there, so, and, and maybe we have this data somewhere beyond my notes, but, um, Gary was explaining that, you know, it used to be we made some money on some of the recycling, um, but that's changed a lot in the last couple of years. And so now the only areas where we still make money are the metal and the cardboard.
Which they're now not, oh, yeah, the cardboard is still separated out, yeah, so newspapers are not anymore.
Newspapers aren't separated anymore. You can combine.
Does that go in the regular, just, mixed paper?
Yeah, yeah.
Since I haven't taken a newspaper for so many years, I wasn't aware of that, but, but, okay.
Yeah, so, um.
I get mine over the internet, so I just, I just, I just dumped my computer in it.
Well, and so that's another thing.
The other thing, I bet you they have more computers.
The, so right now, you can bring your TV and you can bring old tires and you just drop them off. It actually costs, on average, costs the town twenty dollars a TV to have it disposed of. So what they do is they collect the TVs till they have enough, and then they call, and then they take it to whomever, I don't know, and they weigh it, and then we're charged based on the weight. Um, but it averages, he said it averages out about twenty dollars, and tires are even more expensive. Um, he wasn't sure exactly about the cost, but by weight, it costs more than the TVs do, and, um, and again, they just have a dumpster sitting there, and once it's full, they haul it off and they weigh it, and then we get charged for whatever that is. And it's, they, he said, this is not a, like a once a year thing. I mean, they're, you're, they're collecting enough that it's, that it's, it is a expense. Um, let me just see what else he had to say, um.
Tire swing in every yard.
Right. Um, he said the, uh, community composting, yeah, community composting is going well. It's been fairly smooth and easy. He says Black Earth is great about coming and cleaning out, taking the bins, taking the bags out and leaving a clean bin, and Gary's figured out, you know, how you have two of them set up and one turned the other way, so, because we get charged per bin, whether, so if somebody has started a third bin, even though one is not full, and then they take a partially full one, we still get charged the full, forgotten what it is. He didn't, he couldn't tell me what it is per barrel, but I guess he paid nine hundred dollars.
We had some money, I think, from a grant.
No, that's something else, yeah, that's something else, so.
But the question, the, the bigger question for that is, how many pounds does he think, I mean, let's say, let's say he did pay nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, no, no, that was for something else, so don't, don't lose that number.
Uh, question is, did we save any money in our tipping, our other tipping fees, and at least that goes, I mean.
And what he said, he said it's early to tell, but his, his gap, his observation was that so far, it does not seem to have made a significant reduction in our.
In our solid waste.
Solid waste tonnage.
Right.
But it's only been since June.
June, yeah.
They start June fourth or something, so less than a month, or just about a month, and with very little publicity.
And he was able to produce the five years' history of.
He said he, he sent that to you, so that's good.
Okay, good. That, that will be good.
It's all handwritten, but he had it.
Yeah. And there were some issues about people who really should have a second sticker, but they, you know, they buy one sticker and don't fix it to the car. They want to transfer it to another car, even though it's by your license plate, um.
It actually makes a lot of sense, because you don't have, you don't have more garbage because you have another car.
That's true. It's true.
Yeah, but, but I guess the problem is then.
We have a policy that.
We have a policy, yeah.
Yes, so maybe we should cut.
People tend not to obey policies that don't make a lot of sense.
Well, I mean, that would argue for us to say, everybody pays thirty-five dollars and they can put the sticker on any car they want, but, you know.
I mean, you just have to figure out how you do that then, because you don't want the staff person to have to be asking people to show it on their dash or whatever, right? The easy thing now is it's on your bumper and you just take a look.
You know, I worked hazardous waste one year.
Yeah.
And, and we, as, as the cars came in, we checked each one.
Yeah.
And about half the cars didn't have their sticker affixed to the car.
Oh, interesting.
Where's your sticker?
Yeah.
They pulled it out of the glove compartment and put it on the dashboard, or Scotch tape with the windshield to begin with.
Yeah.
Look around town, you still see lots of those, though.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's because of the two-car policy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And it may, and so what, what this leads me to think, without all the data that I think we should have in front of us, is just that this is definitely an area that's worth looking at, studying further and, and figuring out, you know, how do we want to, um, adjust this or make changes? I mean, you know, Gary and I talked about, for instance, with the TVs and the tires and these big, um, you know, non, these, these appliances that you can't put in the metal section, you know, like a computer screen, that you put them in with the hazardous waste day and you charge something, um, for people to bring those, and you just collect them twice a year.
That's what Concord's having electronics recycling. That's what Congress has in electronics recycling this week.
Yeah, yeah, or something like that. And, you know, the dispatcher said, you know, you really should just do it like the transponders they have on, you know, the Mass Pike or whatever, right? You just have a little transponder, transponder on your car, and the gate goes up, and then you go, you know? I said, I don't think that's coming to Carlisle anytime soon, but, um, yeah.
Great idea, though.
Yeah, yeah. And now I know the other big thing is the pay-as-you-throw, which I know there's been some discussion about, and the Household Recycling Committee is, is still working on that, and I know they're planning to go to the Finance Committee and make a presentation in a couple of weeks, so, maybe Monday, actually.
There's been a lot of email traffic in the last couple of days on that.
Say it again?
There's been a lot of email traffic in the last couple of days.
Yeah, yeah. And, and there's a lot, I mean, the interesting thing, looking at their information, is that there are a lot of towns, including some like Carlisle, where they, they have, you know, wells, and they don't have municipal services, that have gone to a pay-as-you-throw, and they've seen a huge reduction in their solid waste tonnage.
I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's well-known, 40% on average.
Yeah, I will say that, you know, Gary thinks, Gary is not in favor of that idea at the transfer station, but, you know, we can, we could work on that if we came to that conclusion. But anyway, I think it's worth looking at this whole area further, and I'm, I'm still gathering some information, so...
And, and to give credit where credit, the Household Recycling Committee has done a very good job of looking at all these alternatives, and they were ready to go this year.
They were.
And they decided, well, let's, let's do this incrementally, and let's start with the composting, and see how that goes, get people used to that, and then we'll go from there. And so I think that, that was a wise decision, and...
I do, too.
And they have a lot of these data that we're talking about, including what the incremental costs of pay-as-you-throw and that sort of thing are, so, I mean, I think we need to support them, and, and they may, they may need some help, but it's, I think it's going to pay off in the long run.
And I think we'll need to, we can use this, or, this is an example of a change that'll affect everybody in town, and we should, we could, we should think about how to, you know, do that in a way that allows, you know, lots of input, and lots of brainstorming, and, you know, and here's what we're thinking, and then get feedback, and, you know, sort of, rather than a...
I think we probably should even have a public hearing.
Yeah, rather than it just kind of...
A formal public hearing.
Right.
One of the things I was thinking was that, in the day when our tax code, the federal tax code, allowed people to deduct their taxes from their, you know, as a deduction, it made more sense to just throw some more of the, you know, the stuff into the tax base, because they could, they were paying it with, you know, let's say, 30 cent dollars or 50 cent dollars, depending on what their tax bracket was. Now, we, I don't think we can be so cavalier with doing that sort of thing, and to me, it makes more sense that if you use more of it, you should pay for more of it.
Well, but, but the key, but more importantly, if you pay for it, you use less of it.
Well, but then, but there's also that.
The idea is to change behavior.
But if you don't want to change your behavior, then you will suffer, you will have the consequence, not me or somebody else, of, of having to then increase. And, and it's real money, it's real money for everybody.
But I think in, in, in working out the policy, what you want to do is encourage people not to throw away as much stuff.
Exactly.
Not to, not simply throw away more because you can afford it.
Well, I, I totally get that, but I'm just saying that...
Which means I think we need to do...
There's all kinds of things that have changed in the world.
Yeah.
We can't, even recycling is no longer recycling. There's no such thing as recycling. So, I mean, personally, I have mesh bags to buy my vegetables in, because that's one less thing I have to recycle, I reuse my mesh bags, I've got all my, you know, we all have to do it a little bit, you know?
And that, and a little bit really works out.
Yeah, and, and it'll also, in this case, should be eventually a savings to the town, too.
Yes, yes.
The, the, reducing the tonnage of solid waste.
Yep.
But we all, I think we need to, you know, educational campaign as well as...
Because we are talking on the order of, what, 200,000 a year?
Is what we spend.
On the order of, yeah, for...
I don't, I don't know exactly what the solid waste tonnage...
For the transportation.
The transfer station, I thought, was 300,000.
Well, that's...
That includes his wages, and, you know...
Yes, yes, yes.
And 50,000 is what comes in from sticker income.
Anyway, it doesn't offset it.
So it doesn't, no.
No.
No. So, I will keep pursuing this, and then, you, I don't know, we, we should decide at some point, I mean, do we want to, as Alan's saying, and do we want to just indicate to the Household Recycling Committee that we encourage them to, you know, keep working on this? They're not really looking, right now, at the whole question of, you know, how the transfer station runs, and what the sticker fee should be. I think their focus is the pay-as-you-throw and the community composting, so at some point...
Well, so that's, that's a decision we're going to have to make, is which way do we want to go?
Right, yeah. All right.
Okay. Do you have something for us that's just come in the door, or is that something?
Oh, Priscilla brought the...
Oh, the things to sign, yeah.
And no, no, no reply from the fire chief.
Uh, no response yet, no.
Okay, so we're not going to get one.
Put that on, yeah.
He's taking the night off.
But we have this other thing on your report, Tim, at some point.
Right, yes, no, no, we...
You've still got some other, yeah.
Yes, more in our report, and we have more on our agenda, namely, this little baby.
Organizational, yeah.
Okay. So thank you for that update, that was still very important, and we still have work to do on that.
Yeah.
Okay, this town council memo about the reorganization and the form of our government. Did you all have a chance to read this? Was it in the packet?
It was in the packet.
It was, yeah.
You know what, it was in everybody's packet but mine, but that's okay.
Yeah, I know, that's why, because Jen said you came and got yours before she...
Anyway, it doesn't matter.
That was why she gave me this extra one.
I had mine, I had, I had gotten it in advance anyway, so, but, okay, I'm just glad everybody had it, then.
Yeah.
Okay. Seven. There's some, a lot of food for thought.
Yeah.
It is. Just to bring everybody up to speed, I've asked for options to grant more authority to our town administrator, because there's a lot of things that I think he could do, which he doesn't, you know, is not in a position to do, and then things don't get done, and we just take too much, too long to, you know, government's bad enough, now, you can't, shouldn't hamstring everybody. So, our town council wrote us a memo about various options, of various ways to go, and he gave us several examples of other towns, and how they have gone, and they were, personally, I think we should probably be doing maybe some sort of a hybrid, a baby step of, you know, we could do something for a year as a pilot, and then work on a bylaw to memorialize and, you know, codify whatever the experiment is that we've done, and to see how everybody thinks it worked.
If we need it, yeah.
If we need it. So I think that would be one way of going. There were several points in here of, from the other towns, that I were, I really feel are important for our town to try to do. And I would say the most important one is to coordinate the activities of all town agencies serving under the Office of Town Administrator and the Office of Board of Selectmen, with those under the control of other officers and multiple member bodies elected directly by the voters. Unfortunately, they're not here right now, but that would be, for instance, example...
Planning board.
Planning board.
Or the board, elected board.
It's another, and, well, normally, most of these all exclude schools, because schools are under a whole different, separate thing. But certainly, I'm looking at...
Which one are you looking at?
Article four.
Article four.
The graph, then.
Yeah, okay.
One. I, I, I just feel that that would make everything much more clear as to how, you know, things are going. It's not that, it's not a real seismic shift, I don't think, but it would, it's a clarification of what all the roles are, and who, you know, who's on first.
Right.
I don't know if anything else popped out. I mean, I had a lot of, you know, underlining, but this, for me, I thought was pretty key.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, going back to the first page, I mean, certainly, one is easy to do.
Yes.
Yes. And it sort of could fit in with this idea of, you know, a trial, right?
Yes.
Because it can, these, some of these things can be done by us, and then you, then you think about whether you want to go to a bylaw, or, you know, one or the other...
You can formalize it. You can formalize the things that worked during the trial.
Exactly. And, and, and make it so that you, you know, somebody can't just come and, you know, yank the rug out from under you, you know, just because next, next year, you know, I'm gone, and somebody else is there and has a different idea.
Right.
Because that would make your life...
But you can informally delegate any of the board's powers, you know, on a temporary basis, and see how...
Right, right, and try it out, yeah.
Yes, but then there's some other things, as I said, like this, that we don't even have the power of, that I think we need to try to get our hands around.
Yeah, yeah. And I think council also pointed out some inconsistencies with the personnel bylaws.
Oh, my goodness, well, in fact...
That was interesting, yeah.
On page 11, the other thing, like, on page 11 of the personnel policies...
Yeah.
They use, let me just get it, sorry. There we go. Oh, yeah, and, page 11, on, under 3.3, under recruitment, under A, we have the town administrator reviewing and approving job notices, under B, we have the town administrator having the notices of vacant positions, and under C, we have the personnel administrator, prior to the interview, doing this, and under D, the personnel administrator is doing something else. And it's like, again, you know, it's totally...
Yeah. Usually that's the same person, but it, you know, you can't really flip between terms, yeah.
It just should be one consistent...
It should be one person.
One person.
Yeah.
And I think it should be you. And maybe we should just leave it as town administrator, not personnel administrator. Maybe it should just be the town, town administrator. That would make it real clear.
Just delegate the authority and responsibilities, and not get too worried about the title.
That's right.
Yeah. No, I think there's, there's a lot of room for improvement there.
Yeah, I mean, so, so, some of this is, again, part of that whole, idea of cleaning up all our policies.
Yes.
Right. I talked to Labor Council about that, they're willing to take that on as a project.
Are they?
They have kind of best practices for personnel.
Can I send my notes?
Yeah, you can.
Oh, good.
They're gonna, yeah.
Yeah, because I have a whole bunch of notes here.
Good.
Okay, great.
Yeah, because we can have a specific proposal.
Yes.
Something we can vote on.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, because a lot of them are kind of outdated, and...
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
So, so, do we want to make, I guess we don't need a motion?
Or, or, Council also said he could come talk to the board.
I, I do think he should, and I...
You want it, yeah.
I think it should be very clear what we're trying to do, and I think definitely it's number one, but then, under number one, what are the things that we would like to delegate?
Right.
That's the specific proposal I'm talking about.
Yes, that's, yes.
Right.
But that's what, in fact, what I think I was doing in the back here, these are sort of the things that I would like to see him do, which I think are things that supposedly we're sort of doing, but, yeah, it's, you're looking at exhibit three again. All of them, I, you know, I have all of them.
Yeah, they're good ideas from all, from a lot of these examples he gave us.
Yes, yeah.
I guess schedule Tom to come in.
So, yes, but in the meantime, what I would like our membership to do is read through these things, and, and come back with your ideas, as what do you think we should be already starting to delegate formally, and we'll make, be ready to make a motion.
Yeah.
And we can get started, and we can do it little by little, and, and I guess the other question is, and that question goes for you, too, Tom, what do you, Tim, sorry, not Tom, Tim.
Right.
What do you think?
No, I should do the same, that's...
Yes, like, what are the priorities?
Yeah, what are your priorities?
Yes, we should all do it, yeah.
And I think also, you know, depending on what those are, and if there are any toes that are going to be stepped on, you know, thinking about that, and how to...
And there's going to be.
Absolutely. Well, we have to have a, well, we will have to have...
There's also some enough changes, you know, going on in some of the committees, that in some ways, it's a good opportunity.
This is a good time to be doing this.
Time to do it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so, so our assignment is to look at...
To reread this.
And to, what would be on our list of things to, to delegate.
Specific authorities that you would like to delegate.
Delegate, for, sort of a trial period, yeah, okay. And now, is there a way to communicate with Nathan and Luke before the next meeting to let them know?
I can do that, yeah.
Yeah, this is all, this, this, did this go online as well, or did we just get hard copies in the packet?
Do you, uh...
This is some...
No, 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 it's, it's online.
I typically only look at the hard copy, but it's on the electronic, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Anybody else want to say anything about that? Okay, we're done cemetery degrees, okay, back to town administrator's report? No, I thought we did all that, all your reports?
Well, there's the part-time position.
Oh, sorry, 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 oh, yes, that's right.
Yeah, I did, I guess, can pass this out, I didn't, I guess I didn't make the packet.
Yeah.
Well, you, you, Kate, you, Alan, and I had talked a few weeks ago about a part-time position that might be able to assist the facilities manager with procurement and contract administration, those kinds of details, because Steve's much more of a hands-on guy than a bureaucrat, if you will. And I looked at other communities that have kind of a hybrid position, that assists, work in the selectmen's office on administrative duties, but also have a kind of a procurement focus or a project focus, work as sort of part-time staff to committees like, you know, the Energy Task Force, or Household Recycling, or the Cable Committee, if we get that up, you know? That there's someone, someone that can, can work with the committees, and it's, you know, and take, you know, some things off of Jen's plate, some things off of my plate, some things off of Steve's plate, and find a, kind of find a home for those, you know...
Hopefully with some grant writing, because I was thinking for the...
Yeah, that's, that's one of the duties that I, I think is referenced in there. So, in looking at, there's an awful lot in there, and I think some of the other towns that have the position, it's not a part, it's, it's, you know, more closer to a full-time position, so some of this might be, have to be pared back, if we're talking about someone that's like 15 to 18 hours a week.
Do you want to keep it, is it under, under the critical...
I think that was, that was what we talked, wasn't it, like, another part-time position?
Yeah.
Yeah, well...
Well, I may not, you know, it may grow into, you know, like Steve's position might grow into something bigger, too.
Exactly, you know?
In the future. So, I know there's a lot here, I don't expect you to go through it all in the night, but if you wanted to, kind of redline it, and...
Yeah.
Send it back, I'd like to go to the personnel board with it in August, if you approve of, you know, creating the position in the first place, that'd be something we'd make as part of our budget proposal going forward. But I think, you know, I think certainly, well, you're on facilities, Kate, I mean, there's, you know, Steve is out straight, and...
Steve, yes, the, the facilities manager is out straight, and he need, and, and I know for a fact that the Energy Task Force is out straight, and in fact, has burned them out, and...
They're all looking for some help.
They're all looking for help, they're, both for writing the grants, and then for administering them, and writing the reports later in order to...
Right.
And even, even data maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have someone to track that.
So we need this in the town. I'm wondering if we should ask for a full-time position, let FinCom beat us back to part-time?
That's right. Cut that part out of the tape, yeah.
Strike that from the meeting for notes.
Everybody's watching the All-Star.
Yes, that's right, yeah. Well, I guess what I'd like to know from you, Tim, is really, truly, how many hours do you think this is? Because this is a long list of...
I think it's part-time, at least at this point.
You think it's part-time?
I think there's probably not enough support for, you know, the Facilities Manager on its own, that the position ought to help out with, you know, things in the Selectmen's Office, like, you know, permits and appointments and things that kind of need to be tracked to take, you know, some of that from, you know, Jen's position and, you know. So I think... I do think it can be a part-time position at first, and we'll see if, you know, if that's adequate, but I wouldn't want to create something that's too big.
And we can add, you know, like the Energy Task Force, we can add that if there's room.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
And is it... Do you think it'll be fairly easy to hire someone who wants to work on these kinds of tasks in a part-time role?
Well, we've had pretty good luck with part-time position. People are kind of looking to get their feet wet in a certain position, and with the idea that, you know, it might grow. You might not hang on to someone for too many years, but that's to be expected.
And/or somebody retired.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Or somebody retired, you know?
Right, that's looking for, yeah.
They don't have to be a town resident.
No, true.
So, I absolutely concur with the need for this position.
So we'll go through this ourselves, give you feedback on what we think.
And then, next month, we'll go to Personnel with it.
And so, you'd... Ideally, you'd like to take this to the Personnel Board in August?
Right.
Yeah, he has to, because, in fact...
Deadline's August.
That's our requirement.
That's our requirement.
Right.
We've established that.
Yes. And I was just told tonight that that was a rather aggressive deadline, and I said, "Yep, I know."
Got to draw a line in the sand somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, it means that you have to...
We found out that starting too late has problems.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's it.
It crashed at the end.
What it means for the departments is that they have to do forward planning a year in advance.
Yeah. Which is what they ought to be doing.
And that's why we keep on stressing, you know, succession planning and things like that, because all this stuff has to be done way before you need it.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it doesn't get done at all. Okay. Well, I think that's the end of our agenda. We have some future meetings. Request for entertainment license, okay? And Tuesday, August 13th, will we already be doing the requests, reviewing the requests for personnel changes? And there are quite a few. You and Luke are already not going to be there for that.
Right.
So...
Or maybe you might want to meet a different week in August, if that's a problem.
Maybe we'll... We might have to see if there's another week in August.
Yeah, the week earlier, I think both Luke and I were available the week before this.
And I am not.
And you are not.
Ah, okay.
I think Luke told me the 23rd is not a good date for him as well, so, which will be our next meeting, but...